Okay, DCTV, you all set?
What's up?
Thank you. Okay, gonna call the meeting to order. Everybody please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. DCTV, flag please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please remain standing as we offer a moment of silence for our service women and men, both past and present, and also for our healthcare workers who are still on the frontline of this pandemic and ignorance. Please be seated. So McGinnis, do we have a warrant?
We do have a warrant, yes.
Okay, gentlemen, I would like a motion to sign the warrant using our stamp.
Motion to sign the warrant.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum? And the chair votes in favor. All right. Appointment 6:30, we have a hearing from Colvia/Shell, 831 State Road for the Replacing of Fuel Tanks. The hearing is hereby opened. Okay, who do we have for the proponent?
My name is Jonathan Shepard, I represent AU Engineering.
Okay. And Mr. Shepard, if you could please describe as to what you want to do. Mr. Shepard?
Can you hear me?
Yes. You keep, you keep, there you go.
I have a bad signal on the phone.
Okay.
I'm going to put in a three, okay, wait. And so we're saying both 15 capacity, 1,000 gallons, 9,000 super unleaded, the other 15,000 regular unleaded. So we've increased the gas, the set from 22,000 gallons to 30,000 gallons fuel storage capacity.
Okay, has this, has this been vetted by the Fire District Chief?
My understanding, the Fire District Chief has seen our plans and they have been submitted for review.
Okay. Board member comments? Okay, is there anybody in the audience who has comments in favor of this application? There any member in the audience who are against this? Being none, I'm going to close the hearing. Board, pleasure?
John.
Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I was just wondering, did the Conservation Commission have to weigh in on this?
I believe all permitting goes through all the departments and I believe there are no conservation problems.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Haron. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye. I'm sorry, excuse me, used to, used to this. Roll call vote, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Okay, Mr. Shepard, you have your approval.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Okay. All right, that concludes the appointments. New business, we have a cultural council appointment, Elise Baggan. Ms. Baggan, are you here? Being none, okay. Uh, let's see. Just looking at her letter. Yep, looks, looks fine to me, Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? Roll call, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. All right, just send Ms. Baggan's a letter, tell her thank you. All right. Now comes the fun part, the tough part. Like to welcome our new Board of Public Works Director, Commissioner, Ron LaBelle. Mr. LaBelle has a pretty good career as a Public Works Superintendent for the City of New Bedford for 43 years. If I use the word stellar, it's probably not describing it well enough, so, uh, Ron, I'd like to welcome you aboard. And I would like the hundreds of thousands of people at home to see their new public, public, um, Board of Public Works Commissioner. So if you'd like to introduce yourself and just give us a little bit of your background, because if you give us all 43 years, we'll be here.
I wouldn't do that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, I'd like to apologize to the whole Select Board for missing the prior meeting. I, uh, I went to Florida with my wife and we were babysitting our grandchildren, so that, that without any question took precedence.
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm looking forward to working for the town. I've lived in the town for 43 years, but I, I, I worked in New Bedford for most of my career. You know, I, I, I worked private sector in, in construction for some years and then, and then went to the city and honestly, you know, undertook quite a few projects that were, um, some of them pretty big, the largest was the wastewater treatment plant out at Fort Rodman. I played golf with John Bullard, so he and I like to still kid each other that he blames me for losing the election. But I, I'm, I'm looking forward to working for the town. Um, I, I've lived here most of my adult life and, and time to give back. You know, I could enumerate multiple, multiple projects. I think in my career, I spent half a billion dollars on water wastewater projects, TSO projects, uh, you know, I could go on and on, but, um, thank you very much for, uh, giving me this opportunity.
Well, I, once the name came across the board as a candidate for the Board of Public Works, it became an absolutely, probably one of the most easiest, no-brainer decisions this board, no matter who was on it, has ever made. This just clearly, this, this was a slam dunk and I am just, I'm thrilled to have you aboard, that's for sure.
Thank you again, thank you for the opportunity.
I, I think it's an exciting time for the DPW, there's so much going on, not just with water, but with our master plan coming forward. And, uh, a lot of the things that we're talking about, the master plan involves DPW and great wisdom depth, so, uh, I, it's a perfect time to come on and really appreciate, Ron, taking us on and, uh, I look forward to working with you in any way that we can to make things work in the right direction. Thanks again for, for joining us, man.
No, thank you, my, 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 my honor, actually, I'm looking, looking forward to it. I, I, I need to get my feet wet, I, I, I need to, you know, you know, you know, put my hands around like the master plan, if it's a draft that I could get and take a look at and read, maybe meet some of the department heads, uh, you know, touch bases, uh, y- you know, with the work groups and, and the crews and what they do and how they do it and why they do it. You know, try to get into the nitty-gritty of it so I can offer, you know, whatever insights I, I, I can.
Whatever you need, we will get you, that's for sure. Mr. Mickelson?
Welcome aboard, Mr. LaBelle.
Yep, thank you, Ms. Mickelson.
Mr. Haron?
Also welcome aboard and I look forward to helping you get your feet wet.
Thank you.
With him, make sure you're wearing high waters, please.
You're gonna need it, you're gonna need it, thank you, Ron.
Oh, again, Ron, uh, welcome aboard and, uh, we look forward to, uh, to seeing you work on the, uh, on the board. And I'm sure the two other Commissioners are just as excited as I am to see you come aboard, so, good luck. And you, like I said, you need anything from us, we'll get it to you. You need anything from us individually, just please feel free to contact us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
What a great appointment, people.
Fell out of the sky.
Best one we've ever made.
Ron, we love you.
Well, I, uh, I'll do my best.
That's, I have, that I have no doubt.
Okay, all right, um, good evening, gentlemen.
Good night.
Thank you.
Take care. Welcome.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have SERPAD appointments, the Joint Transportation Planning Group. Who is the current designated to that right now?
Uh, the current designated was, uh, Dave Hickox, who is retired, so, um, generally we've appointed the DPW Director or interim in this case, maybe?
Yep, Tim Barber.
Yep, Tim, motion to appoint Tim Barber to the SERPAD, uh, uh, Commission, as a Commission Member, Dartmouth Commission Member.
For the Joint Transportation Planning Group?
Correct.
That, make sure you make that designation.
The Joint Transportation.
Our second to that motion?
I second.
Okay, we missed it, thank you. On the motion, any questions? Okay, roll call, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor? Five oh. Uh, do we need to appoint an alternative?
Um, you can, you do not have to.
We don't have one? Okay, that's fine.
We didn't have one last year either.
Okay, good. All right, the next one would be to the Dartmouth SERPAD Commission Member.
Yes, uh, last year.
Mr. Chairman? We did have, Tim Barber was listed as the, um...
Oh, the alternate?
Alternate.
Alternate, last time, I don't know if it makes a difference or not, but.
That's right.
Well, let's find an alternate, um, maybe be one of the engineers, uh, they can act, just ask and then we can always do that later appointment.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, now we have the SERPAD Commission Member?
Chris, this, this, this is the representative for the town, so, uh, last year it was Cody Hadad.
Cody, want to take it on again?
He does.
All right, then. Do I have a motion to reappoint Cody Hadad as our Representative to SERPAD?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? Okay, roll call, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor? All right, good job. All right, CONCOM appointment. All right, I don't, okay, wait a minute, yeah. All right. Okay, so we have, uh, some, some people here looking to be appointed to the Conservation Commission. Um, let's see, we have Nathaniel Watson, uh, we have Tim Cusson, uh, Molly, uh, Kotay, and, uh, let's see, for the Commission, Mark Garrett is, was here?
Is here?
Oh, there he is, okay. Hi, Mark. Okay.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Nice to you. It's our own Dartmouth version of Santa Claus.
Oh, oh, oh.
All right, so, all right, um, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have each candidate introduce themselves and then, uh, if there's any members have any questions, um, we'll go from there and we'll go by alphabetical order, so CO is more than, is earlier than CU, so Molly Kotay, please.
Hi, how are you? Um, I'm a licensed site professional with, uh, civil and environmental consultants and I had put a letter of interest in to the appointment for Conservation Commission. Um, been a Dartmouth resident for a good portion of my adult life, have, uh, worked in similar fields. I was a member of the Conservation Commission in New Bedford when I was an employee there, uh, early on in my career and, um, I just wanted to, I saw that there was a vacancy, Tom Hardman had mentioned it to me, um, we work together now and, um, it looked interesting. I think I have relevant experience and wanted to offer up, um, just volunteer and give back to the town. My children both went through the public schools, one is a junior at the high school, one already graduated, um, so I just wanted to offer to help out, um, on the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Cusson?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name's Tim Cusson, I'm a lifelong resident of Dartmouth, I, I grew up in Dartmouth and, uh, met my wife Jen, we decided to stay in Dartmouth where we've been raising our three children, uh, the older, oldest of which who also has made a decision to reside in Dartmouth and, um, who is a police officer, very proud of. Um, myself, my professional career, I've been involved in real estate development most of my, uh, adult life. I, uh, done a lot of residential development through various communities in Massachusetts. Um, in the last seven to 10 years, I've been really concentrating on, um, commercial and industrial developments, uh, redeveloping, uh, large hospitals and projects that have been either brownstones or abandoned properties. Um, also have developed a large number of, uh, solar projects, um, both ground mounted, uh, canopies and building arrays. Um, I don't think of a way to give back to the community that I love, um, for a while now, uh, I unsuccessfully for a couple of different offices, um, and I heard of the vacancy and I thought it'd be a great way, um, to give back to the community. I, I've dealt with, I can't even tell you how many different conservation agents and, uh, commissions in various towns, you know, anywhere from simple, um, ANRAD to, uh, chapter 91 issues, um, replication areas, uh, critical habitat areas, uh, so I think I have, you know, a lot of, uh, relevant experience and, uh, it's something that I could definitely, uh, I think, uh, help with and give back to the community.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you all for having me. My name is Nat Watson, uh, I'm, I've, uh, I grew up in Dartmouth and recently decided with my wife, who also grew up in Dartmouth, to move back to Dartmouth after a brief stint in Boston, uh, we have chosen to raise our family here, we have a one-year-old and, um, you know, Dartmouth has always been a very important place for both of us, we've been, we've been very regular, uh, visitors as well as, uh, lifelong members of some of the local, uh, environmental organizations, including DNRT and the Lloyd Center. From a professional standpoint, uh, I work for the financial services firm Brown Brothers Harriman, I've been there the last 10 years and my experience certainly does not, uh, directly apply to, uh, some of the environmental considerations that the CONSCOM makes, but I do have a lot of experience in managing the interests of multiple parties, legal considerations, um, as well as just managing the risks inherent with any new developments or projects. Um, and I feel that, uh, like the others, like Molly and Tim, uh, Dartmouth has meant a great deal to me and I'm looking for a way to give back, especially now that I have a, a one-year-old who will be going through Dartmouth Public School System and be a, uh, you know, a, a, a user of all the wonderful natural resources that our town has.
All right, well, thank you. It certainly does lend us a difficult, uh, position. Mr. Garrett, um, do you want to weigh in on this, please?
Well, we conduct, we, the Conservation Commission conducted preliminary interviews to become familiar with the three candidates who submitted their letters of interest. Um, they felt that all were qualified to do the job, uh, they have made a recommendation of Nat Watson to the Select Board, uh, understanding that you can go along with the resident, the recommendation or, uh, go, go your own way and select someone else and they will abide by that, uh, it was a very close, uh, close consideration, uh, but Nat seemed to have, uh, edged Molly and Tim out in the Conservation Commission's mind.
Okay. Board members, questions for the candidates? Mr. Tattelbaum?
I try to listen a handful of, uh, Commission, uh, meetings, because I find them to be not only important to the town because of our resources, but the kind of decisions you have to make and I, I, listening, I appreciate how much you have to be, uh, incredibly objective, uh, because the law is the law and you need the first and foremost choices to follow the law. Um, and, uh, I guess my question would be, uh, to maybe each candidate is your ability to do that based on your past experience and what you do, because it, it sounds to me the Commission is most interested in the ability to follow the law as opposed to interpret it or add your own opinions.
We'll take that order, we'll go in the same order, uh, Ms. Cody?
So, most of my professional career has been in public service. I worked for the City of New Bedford for five years as an environmental planner. I then was with Mass DEP in the Southeast Region for 14 years and so I think I have very direct experience in ensuring that the regulations and the laws are followed. Um, in, in fact, it was my job for close to 20 years.
Mr. Cusson?
Yeah, sure. Um, like Molly, with all the, uh, experience that I've had in dealing and permitting projects, you know, I understand the, the rules, um, and regulations that we all abide by, so, you know, enforcing those is, is the job, so I don't see that that's, uh, there is an issue there.
Mr. Watson?
I don't have any prior com, or prior experience with the Conservation Commission, um, and I, I don't have any experience, uh, today from a professional standpoint that would interfere with any of my judgments or, or rulings in its, in my capacity on the committee. And that being said, you know, the only thing I can go by are the rules and laws of the town as well as the state.
Any follow-up, David?
Good for now.
Any other? Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I just want to be sure that each of the candidates can successfully attend all the meetings.
Yeah, we do have a regulation.
Right, we keep track, yeah.
I'm assuming, I see you three shaking heads, I'm assuming that answer is yes on all three parts. Okay, good. Yeah, we do have a, um, we do have a suggested requirement of 75%, you know, um, per year, not, not an overall period of time, because we, you know, we want to make sure, the more important things with meeting the requirements, is meeting the meeting requirements, number one, is making sure that the function of the board continues and you have the, um, quorum to, to continue, plus the fact that Conservation holds hearings on, just every single meeting there's a hearing. Um, and that's extremely important, not only for, uh, the board, also for, you know, Mr. Garrett and the staff, but more so important for the person doing the filing. Um, they want to make sure that their project goes, uh, you know, relatively smoothly, quickly, and they can get things done without going through all the bureaucratic rigmarole, so, uh, it's good to hear, to have. Anybody else?
Mr. McDonald, might I make a comment here?
Sure.
To follow up on your thought. Uh, one of the considerations that the Commission deliberated, deliberated over was not just attendance, but the ability to sit on specific hearings and the level of anticipated conflict of interest that might arise, uh, with, with some of the candidates, uh, we see, um, you know, projects come forth from some of these, uh, from the, some of the employers of, uh, candidates and the Commission was somewhat concerned about that.
Anybody, uh, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yeah, I, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mark, thank you, because, uh, my first impulse would be the one who's most qualified with lots of experience would be the best choice. Uh, but it, and I certainly, it's what, it's, it's a good and bad news here is that we have three great candidates, we only can fill one, uh, position, but, um, uh, it's also pretty distasteful, my part, to go against the Commission because they put the time and effort and know what it takes. And, uh, that, that comment you made seems to make a lot of, an awful lot of sense as to why they picked, uh, picked, uh, Mr. Watson.
And you want, Mr. Mickelson?
Yeah, so that, that being said, um, it's, um, I would like to, uh, like to, uh, bring, uh, Nathaniel Watson's name and present him as the, uh, the new Conservation Commission appointment.
Okay, I want to hold up on the motion, because I want to make sure I get questions out of the way.
I just, just wanted to make one other comment. And, uh, Mr. Mr. Watson, your, um, the company you work for is most prestigious by all means and, uh, and with that being said, um, to, to have the ability to work for that company gives you an awful lot of opportunity as a good negotiator and a good listener. And I'm sure you know the legal, legalness of all, all the items and if you don't, you'll make sure you do before the meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Haron, comment?
Uh, yes, I was just gonna say, I, I was gonna recognize the Commission's, uh, choice and I was gonna move Mr. Watson's name forward also.
Okay, so since Mr. Mickelson wants to make the motion, Mr. Mickelson, John, will you?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Right, so, so we have a motion on the table to appoint, uh, Nathaniel Watson to the Conservation Commission. It's made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Haron. On the motion, any comments? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum? And the chair was not going to vote, four oh. Okay, congra, congratulations, Mr. Watson, you'll be receiving a letter, uh, in the, uh, in the mail, uh, you'll need to get sworn in. Uh, Mr. Cusson, Ms. Cody, uh, please, um, we're constantly looking for volunteers in various different aspects of the town. Um, sometimes we don't have people to run, um, and if there's anything that comes in that piques your interest, please, uh... please, please apply. I, I, I'm asking you. Sometimes we really, sometimes we really need people.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
Can I ask one question? There are a couple of other items on the agenda that I've actually spoken to you about in the press. So, can I stay on it? Do you want me to just go and join the YouTube link and just watch?
Sean?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter either way.
Yes, I mean, she can stay on. It's up to the chair of the board to, you know, to, to allow her to speak or not if she wants to speak later on, so.
Yeah, I would just, if you're going to wa, if you're going to, please mute yourself.
Absolutely.
We don't hear your phone calls and stuff like that.
Certainly, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have the building commissioner. This is regarding the notice of paperless applications. Ooh, love it. Joseph?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Select Board, for your time tonight. It's been four months since I've been here and it's been a whirlwind. It's been, been a good thing. And the progression of everything that I would like to see happen in my goals, one was to finally get us paperless on permits and get us on the online permitting system. I have put out a notice that starting May thirty-first, well, actually it'll be June first because May thirty-first is the holiday this year, that we're going to go to an online permitting system only. I use that term not loosely. We're hoping to transition everybody onto the on, online permitting. But there is a kiosk available at the building department that has been set up with a computer system for people that are having difficulty. They can come into the building department. They can use the computer system that we are providing and they're coming in with paper applications anyways. So it's, it's a great opportunity to get them on the computer system, help them understand the process, help them learn how to scan documents, upload documents. So the transition should be pretty good. To put it in perspective for the board, I'd like to give you some numbers as of today. As of today, since I started January fourth, we have one thousand sixty-eight permits created online, issued online. There's nine hundred and eighty-two as of today. So that is, that's combined electrical, plumbing, sprinkler, building, everything. So it is working and it is successful. And people are starting to get used to it. Is there some resistance? Yes, there always will be. But the system is, the training is moving and it's moving in a very good direction. And I have a very talented staff, along with myself, that we will provide assistance to anyone that comes in that wants to put these permits, how to apply online. The other advantage to this is also with the progression of everything, more departments are coming on board. So a contractor, architect, homeowner, et cetera, is not running around from department to department getting a sheet signed. Like when I was a builder, you had to run all over the place, get a signature from fire, run over DPW, run wherever. You spent a lot of time doing that. With this, the advantage is, is everything is on the permit application, all the workflow. So if it has to go to fire, there's an email alert that notifies fire. There's been, there's a permit application they need to review, the same with conservation, the same with health, planning, everyone is on it. So it's just a matter of them, everything's online, look at it, they can complete it, which will be an approved, and then the permit moves faster. When you have stacks of paper permits, which I saw, that, that takes time to go through all of that and look at all the file and everything that you need to. So even the departments, it's expediting and, and making the system quicker for people. The other advantage is too, is that once everybody gets used to online permits, they're not handcuffed to when town hall is open. We have people now doing permits on Saturdays and Sundays online, two o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning, whatever time it may be. There's just twenty-four seven. So their workday doesn't have to be interrupted. Again, I, I use, when I was a builder, you have to leave the job site, go to the local town hall, apply, take all that time out. Now they can do it at home. They can do it on a laptop in their truck, wherever they have internet and wifi and capability for the viewpoint, they can access and start an application. And if they run into trouble, my clerks are more than capable and, and glad to do the customer service, which they've been doing. So I just wanted to present this before the board, Sean and McKenna and I, Town Administrator, had just, just talked about this and thought it was a very good idea to talk to the select board about the next step, where we're going now as far as the building department. My thank you for your time.
Well, I can see by the number of online permits that have been submitted and already what has been approved, the rate is over ninety percent and that's, that's just so customer-friendly. It's, it's, it's just off the charts. So I think this is going to be, this is what this, this is what we've been striving for, for the last eighteen months, that's for sure. And it couldn't come at a better time. Mr. Tattlebaum?
We, the interview process for Mr. Braga, we made it pretty crystal clear that this is the direction we wanted and here we are, four months later, delivered. We can impress it. And I have to say that I've had many, many comments about Mr. Braga and his performance and the, and the way he works around town and it's, nice going, Joe. Question, do you anticipate, starting June first, any kind of a rush of people who need help? And therefore, is there going to be an issue about bogging down with trying to help people at the computer?
I don't, Mr. Tattlebaum, I don't think it'll be a rush because I think we're having the rush now. I think that what's going to happen is those folks that have been accustomed to doing paper applications, that ten percent or twelve percent, whatever it may be, they'll come in and they'll be sporadic, I believe. We might have a back, backup. I can't honestly gauge that. But we will be available to help them and get them started into the process and then hopefully they can go to their own computer. And but the numbers, the numbers are revealing that it's working and a lot of people are using the online system as of right now. And I have to be honest with you. I have to give credit to the, to my staff. My, my two clerks, Bev and Sue, are outstanding with customer service at the counter, on the phone. You can call them, they'll walk you through the process. They're very patient with people and just help them. This, with this department coming together as it has and we're all working for the same goal, has really pushed this forward. So I have to give credit to my staff for their openness, for Mr. McKenna's allowing me and affording me the latitude and freedom to keep pushing things that we need to, to get it moving forward for the town of Dartmouth. And I see, I see it as a good thing.
Great, great. Excellent. Anyone else? Well, I know I was, I was looking for something today on the website and I came across the permitting and it's, it's right there. It spells out exactly where it's supposed to be. So I, I just, I'm very, I'm intrigued as to how this is going to go. But you've already given me some of the numbers of, that's already been happening. I know it, it's going to work. It's going to work and it's going to be great. And I can't, you know, I, I just want to thank everyone involved to get this done. I know Joe, it was nice to have Joe implemented under his watch. I know this is something that Sean has been working for, for the past eighteen, twenty-four months. And it's nice to see it come to fruition. So, great job, everybody.
Thank you. And kudos to, and kudos to Chad. I can't forget Chad. Chad is so, Chad, listen, without Chad, I'd be up the creek without a paddle in my little canoe. But Chad Deschamps is, and what he's done also, I have to leave that, that comment also. He's been phenomenal, developing and working with us, listening to our ideas and implementing and making the changes necessary. So he's been a very important part of this also.
Thank you. Everybody needs a Chad now and then.
Yes, yes. I do, I do more than now and then.
All right, congratulations. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you so much, Board, for your time.
Hey, next item on the agenda, it's a solar therapeutics HCA vote, the host community agreement. Mr. McGinnis?
Do we have to approve the building commissioner's request?
No, you, you didn't have to vote on it. We just wanted to run it by the select board so that they're aware. If you had any objections, just to, to talk about them. Yeah, so as you have been aware, so we've, this has been a long process for the town. We issued a request for qualifications multiple times to find a, a vendor that was interested in partnering for, with a host community agreement for retail marijuana sales in the town of Dartmouth. This will be the town's first retail marijuana license. We went through a very thorough, thorough vetting process with, with an internal team. Cody Hadad, when he came in, kind of took over and worked directly with the vendor on a number of things. We've worked with council on this host community agreement contract. And you saw solar therapeutics last month when they came in to present their plan for the town and, and what they envisioned for retail marijuana sales up off Font's Quarter Road. So this is just the culmination of that. We've included the host community agreement in the packet. I think you've all seen it multiple times, but this is the final version that's been vetted by both the towns council and solar therapeutics council. So we're presenting it to the board tonight for approval and, you know, Cody or I can answer any questions you have.
Hey, board members, have any questions? Does anybody from solar therapeutics, all right, hold up? Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yeah, the, there's a number of financial parameters that are in this agreement. And I'm just wondering, could you speak about how we come up with those numbers and how they make compared? Or what the size and scope of this operation versus others is it? And I know it's a broad question, but maybe you give us, give me a little guidance as to how the, how we came up with this?
Sure. Cody?
Yeah, so when we drafted our request for qualifications, we included a draft host community agreement and we did that using various other communities, what, what other communities have gotten and we've gauged that. And, and based off of that, we've worked with solar therapeutics to come to a beneficial, it's, it's extremely beneficial for the town of Dartmouth. We're certain, we're certainly getting our fair share when you look at other communities. So, you know, just to highlight a few of those things. So we'll get a three percent impact fee. That's three percent of their revenue for the year. We'll also get a three percent local sales tax. So six percent of their revenue, every year, they will contribute fifty thousand dollars to the town for us to use in various departments, parks and rec, police, health, youth commission, just to name a few. And they'll also make best efforts to go above and beyond and make donations to local charities. In Somerset last year, they've donated over ten thousand dollars in charities and their expectation is to do the same in Dartmouth. So, you know, they, they have some projections of what they expect, but I, I think on the low end, will the town be looking at probably somewhere around five hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue?
Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to make a comment that I was very pleased with the presentation they made to us that, that night. They answered all the questions that were in my mind and I would like to congratulate both them and the town side of the negotiations to, for working together to make this potentially happen. And whenever it's appropriate, I'd be glad to, to make the recommendation to that, to, Jesus, to, to, to accept this.
Any, any other questions from board members? All right, we have a motion made by Mr. Gray, Mr. Gracie to enter an agreement with solar therapeutics for a host community agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second had been by Mr. Mickelson. Third made by Mr. Herron. I just wanted to get that in. On the motion, any question? This is strictly on the motion?
No.
Mr. Herron, on the motion?
I, I think I'll have to wait for information at the end of the meeting. I was going to ask a question about the other potential host agreement with the manufacturing facility.
Okay, that's not on, that's not part of this right now, but that can be towards the end of the meeting.
Yes.
All right, on the motion, roll call vote. Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor, five oh.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to make another vote to have me, or have us stamp the contracts? Or do you want to have the board sign it in person?
I would prefer to have the board signing this in person if board members agree.
Agreed.
Can everybody make it up to the select board to sign?
Yep, yep.
Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we will sign it individually. An agreement like this should be signed.
Okay, so we'll, we'll arrange to have, to work with Rob Keller and solar therapeutics, have them sign first. When they've done that, we'll, we'll notify the board.
Sounds good. Excellent. That was easy, Mr. Keller.
Yes, thank you all. We look forward to working with the town. You guys have been great so far. We look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Some fun stuff now. The town digital sign approval. Mr. Mickles, I'm sorry, Mr. McGinnis?
Okay, I think it was last year, the Capitol Committee and Town Meeting had funded a digital sign for the town hall, one of, you know, as part of the improvements to the memorial stadium. We heard from the members of the community, particularly the residents that live close by, that it's, the parking is always an issue, but they were unaware of when events were happening. So that was kind of the initial prompt to look at a digital sign. But also, you know, this past year during COVID, it's, it was instrumental for us to get out information. Where, you know, Jovier, our safety officer, was, you know, lugging around the digital boards to put on the road. But I think, you know, we realized it would be very helpful to have a sign upfront that we could post messages and change them very quickly. So with that, Cody Hadad has been heavily involved in working on the, with the sign vendors to determine the signs, working on the site plan, working with Department of Public Works. Particularly Paul Duarte was very helpful as, as well as Tim Lancaster in helping us identify a location. So with that, I'll let Cody give you a little more information.
Yeah, thank you, Sean. So like Sean said, this was appropriated at a town meeting last year. So since then, we've been working with various sign vendors, trying to figure out what, what our best option would be. You wouldn't believe the options out there for, for a sign like this. So I'm going to share my screen here. I have a proposed design. And are you able to see that?
Yes.
So this was the design that we're proposing. The sign itself is five by eight. The LED portion will be about two and a half feet by seven and a half feet, which will consist of down here. We'll be able to use it for messages and we can also use it for various graphics. The technology behind it is quite impressive. We're able to, it's all able to be controlled remotely and it's, it comes with a free lifetime subscription for that from this particular vendor. The plan would be to post it, we would likely have to get new granite posts because these wouldn't be tall enough, the existing ones. But I think it's, it's a nice look and I think it would be a good idea to continue using the same idea, the granite posts there. So we would likely just order new ones and take those out and, and place them in the same exact location. And it'll have to be a couple inches wider because the sign itself is a full eight feet. And then you have to put a few inches in between there in order to support the sign. And I'll also pull up the site plan here. So this is the proposed site plan. So you can see right here, that's where the existing town hall sign is. And that's where we're proposing to place it, same exact location. It'll just be a couple inches wider. Now, a decision that will be the discretion certainly of the board is the existing sign, when DPW, I work with DPW, they also placed this area over here, which if we chose to do so, they would recommend putting the existing sign there. That would be if we wanted to move the existing sign and, and put it on that opposite side over here. We looked at putting the electric sign here. It, it really wasn't a good option as far as visibility, running the power out there. Where the sign currently is is our best option. So with that, you know, we're willing to take feedback on the design itself. So with that, you know, we're willing to take feedback on the design itself of the sign and also the, uh, site plan and as far as if you would have a preference of keeping the existing sign and relocating it or just, uh, doing away with, uh, existing sign.
Okay, um, I like the, I like the, I like the design of the sign. Um, I, I think it's, it's simple. It's sort of Neo-New England with the granite posts, uh, kind of updated. Um, as far as the existing sign goes, um, I would think that the location in that corner right there makes it a little bit redundant because you have the, uh, stadium and the fence and you'll see the sign basically as you come right upon it. Um, I don't think it's, personally, I don't think it's necessary. I have no, um, no nostalgia for the sign. Um, it hasn't been around in town for a hundred years, so there's really nothing. Um, that if we, and if we don't do anything with the sign, I would like to make sure we keep the granite posts, uh, because I'm sure somewhere down the line, there'll be a new sign somewhere, somebody having it. So, I mean, we can always keep those, um, you know, on, on, on hold. Uh, Board members? Mr. Mickelson?
I agree with you, Sean. Um, I don't see the need for a second sign. It is, it is redundant. And not only that, that the location just, um, it, it's not going to have enough value over there. Uh, but I would keep the sign in, in the building and, and the, in the granite for sure. And the sign does look great and this is, uh, this is wonderful. We've talked about it for a while now, a couple of years. Uh, and welcome to the, the new century.
Um, Mr. Tattlebaum?
Uh, first thing, uh, as far as the old sign goes in that corner, that also could be an issue for blocking traffic as you're trying to exit the, uh, exit the, uh, parking lot. Um, but, uh, do we consider putting the sign, um, the old sign on the, on the building itself? Uh, so it offers you a parallel sign versus a perpendicular one as well?
Uh, I, I'm going to say, um, I would rather not because you would have to drill into the brick. And you want to drill into brick, then you're creating access point for water and damage. And you really can't put it up on the, on the, uh, the roof, the parapet, because there really isn't much there to work with anyway. So, um, I would just say, let's just hold on to it and, uh, down the line, if some, you know, we don't need it, we can always do something with it, put it in a museum or something.
My second question on the new sign, uh, we have some regulations. Is this going to change or is it going to flash or is it going to be constant? Uh, is the message?
So I think we have the option to change it depending, you know, what's going on in town. Uh, we'll have to, with your approval, uh, I'll be submitting, uh, an application for a special permit due to the illumination to the ZBA. And I will also be submitting an application for a variance due to the size, there's only word of appeals.
Yeah, that's. Cause I know there's issues around town, there had been about a sign flashing either too quickly or not soon enough. And people are rubbernecking to read the sign and they're driving along and not paying attention to their driving. So there are a lot of issues about that, flashing signs as well.
Yeah, it, it's pretty customizable. Uh, one of the reasons that we chose to move forward with this one in particular, so that, uh, you can choose the length of how long each message stays. Uh, our, our plan would be to have it lit up between five or six AM and 10 PM, so it's not running all night. Uh, so it, but there's a lot of great options with it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mickelson?
So again, uh, David, it's a good thing you brought that up, but we do have a sign bylaw which I helped write. Um, and we had lots of issues before that sign bylaw, especially when these LED signs came, came into existence and they were everywhere. So we, uh, as the, the town, we need to be, uh, we need to be very careful that we follow every one of those bylaws that we don't, that we don't do anything that, that would set a bad example. So be careful.
Correct. Mr. Herron?
Uh, all programming of the sign will be done in-house?
Correct, yes. Well, it can be done remotely, but it'll be done by town staff.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, there'll be appropriate measures so that we don't all of a sudden see different things that we're not supposed to see on the screen?
We have a very limited group that have access to the sign.
And we vet them all? Were they leased with a 10 to 12 digit password of
Yeah.
upper, lower number cases, uh, low and different things, please?
Generally, we use one, two, three, four, but.
And we vet them all, including you, Sean.
Yeah, the last thing I want to see on air is driving by is, you know, this person stinks. So, okay. Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I previously, when we first started talking about this, I had mentioned that it would be good to, uh, a good use for it would be when we have a person of distinction that passes away, we put the flag at half staff. I get a lot, I won't, I won't say it's bring off the hook kind of questions, but, but I do get people that want to know who passed away. Uh, why is the flag at half staff? I thought that would be a good use for the sign, uh, for a few days at least, uh, during, during that event. Is that still part of the plan?
Yes, I mean, the, you know, we can have a variety of messages, but that's certainly a, a good one. So.
Yeah, it can be.
So, thank you.
I mean, you can have major announcements, um, you know, town meeting, voting. I mean, it's going to be an excellent voting thing, that's for sure. You know, whenever the votes are going to be, so, you know, and I'm sure we can add that to it, so.
Great.
All right. Do you need a final approval from the board on this or?
No, you need, no, just more like Joe Braga's topic. But, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, if I can recommend, uh, the, the youth commission, uh, the youth advocate is on and she just wants to talk about a fundraiser and, uh, we have a couple of items neck that, next that could be lengthy. I don't know if you want to take her out of order.
Yeah, we can. All right.
Good move.
All right, we're going to move on. We'll go on to the youth commission popcorn fundraiser. Hi, Ms. Joseph.
Hi, good afternoon. It was interesting. I do like listening in sometimes, but I want to eat dinner. So thank you for letting me jump ahead. So, excuse me. So the youth commission, um, was looking to raise funds to replenish, um, to get the count that we use those funds to help families out in the community. Um, we used the funds last year to, um, purchase, um, gift cards for food and for gift items for families in the community. So we were looking for ways to replenish. Um, we came up with the popcorn fundraiser. It's actually an online fundraiser. Um, it's over the course of four days. It actually starts in seven days, so, um, more to come with that. So it's over the course of four days, um, no contact with anyone. Um, you can purchase your different types of popcorn. They're actually very delicious. I don't, I'm addicted to it. But you can purchase your popcorn, you pay the vendor, um, it's shipped directly to the individuals who purchased the popcorn. Excuse me, I apologize. And 50% of the proceed comes to the youth commission. So we don't have to do any work, um, we just advertise. And for those who may not like popcorn or want to buy popcorn, um, you can also donate money for first responders. So that's an option that they have for this particular popcorn. Um, the name of the online popcorn, um, vendor is called Double Good Popcorn. So we would definitely be advertising, we're going to have it, um, on our Facebook page, social media. Um, whoever wants to buy can buy. It doesn't have to be people that just live in Dartmouth. If you live in California, Utah, it doesn't matter, but it's money that comes back into our gift fund.
Terrific. Make sure that we have it posted on our website, too.
Yes, so I will be doing another flyer once we have the link ready, um, which would be a couple of days before the event. Um, that's a little more bold. It has popcorn and some other things on there, too. So definitely we'll make sure that we have it on the website.
Excellent.
That's it.
Uh, Mr. Tattlebaum?
Sounds great, Dolores. Excellent.
Thanks.
Uh, you consider posting signs around town that, um, um, in, in locations where people can't hurt to print out some signs and put them out?
Oh, I didn't think about that, but yes, that can be done, too.
If you want to contact me directly, I think I'd help you with that and give you some ideas. I'd like to help you out with that.
I will contact you tomorrow.
I won't be around. Okay.
Thank you for offering. Yes, definitely.
Anybody else? I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Herron on the motion, any questions? Roll call, Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Excellent.
Thank you everyone. Thank you everyone. Have a good evening. Bye.
Have a good work.
Happy dinner.
Oh, yes, thank you. Bye.
I'll be over.
I'll keep a plate warm for you. Goodbye.
Okay, all right. Here we go, people. All right, next item is the town warrant vote and signing. So we have the spring annual town meeting, uh, coming up June 1st. And we have articles to review and make a recommendation on and to vote and to sign. Uh, I was thinking about, and I'd have to ask our esteemed Assistant Town Council, Mr. Cruz. Is it legal for the board to make a recommendation on group articles? Such as Articles One, Two, and Three being the, uh, community preservation? Or do we have to do it individually?
They should be done individually, yeah. Um, in, unless the, conceivably, there could be something in the charter that would allow it differently, but I don't think there's anything in our charter that allows you to do that. So.
All right, just wanted to maybe cut out another, maybe five or 10 minutes. So that's what I figured would probably, but we'll be good at that. All right, so let's start. Article one, Community Preservation Committee, this is the administration of Bud here. Do I have a recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, on the motion, any questions? Roll call vote, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor, recommend. Article two, uh, CPC, the Jones Playground renovations, $179,469, motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Herron. On the motion, any questions? Roll call, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Approved, recommended and approved. Article three, CPC, the Community Housing and Preservation, Historic Preservation Reserve, 92,000 each, motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Herron, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Okay, Article four, Revision to Appropriation, Russell Mills Land Conserva-, uh, Conservation Project in the amount of $312,000 with the same stipulations, allowances, and restrictions as respect to the borrowing. And to further reduce said article, uh, to amend the approval of Article three by reducing that amount, uh, that the Conservation Commission must separately expend on said acquisition to $208,000. Motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Herron. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Appropriation from a cemetery lot fund, $4,500, uh, from the lot fund to be spent on cemetery purposes. Motion?
Motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Herron. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
And chair votes in favor. Article six, to establish the 2022 maximum, uh, if you can correct that word, maximum, it's maximum. I think the last one's supposed to be an M, not an N. Spending limit, I just saw that, sorry. Uh, spending limits for the revolving funds, the cemetery revolving fund will be limited at $4,500. Recreation of park at $185,000 and the library revolving fund for lost and damaged items at $3,500.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Herron. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Okay, Article seven, the acceptance of the capital planning report for the 2022 capital plan, $867,000. $867,143 from tax levy, $3,731,160 from surplus revenue, $600,000 from the sewer enterprise retained earnings, $250,000 from receipts reserved for inflow and infiltration, $700,000 from the water enterprise retained earnings, $2 million from the water enterprise borrowing, $435,050 from the solid waste enterprise retained earnings, $110,000 from this, um, from the stabilization fund for DCTV. The treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow $2 million pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section, Section Seven, or any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes on the town thereof. And it is for, uh, the items that we had reviewed the last time. Any questions on this? Mr. Barnes?
Yes, I've learned, uh, today it should be Chapter 44, Section Eight, not Seven.
Okay, we will make that change.
Yep.
With that change, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Herron. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
But chair votes in favor. Article eight, salaries and stipends of elected officials, town clerk, which includes a 1,000 educational stipend for FY 2021. Uh, and I'm assuming it will be 79,350, correct?
Correct.
And all the others will be paid with a hearty thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Herron. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Schedule A, FY 2022 Budget Appropriation, Article Nine. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $94,610,634 from various funding sources for the purpose of funding expenses, salary, and compensation of all elected and appointed officers of the town for payment of debt and interest, charges, and outlays of the various towns department for the ensuing 2022 fiscal year. The operating is in our packet. Any questions on that, gentlemen?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
No.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor, four to one. All right, Article 10, Funding the Sewer Inseptic Betterment System Betterments to the sum of $1,173,300, uh, $207.88 from the sewer betterment revenue to cover the debt service and associated fees on sewer betterment projects. And to see if the town will vote, $43,551 from the septic betterment revenue to cover the FY 22 debt service and associated fees on the Title V Septic System Betterment Loans as administered by the Board of Health. On the motion, um, motion made by Mr. Mickelson? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Herron. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
And chair votes in favor. Article 11, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. See if the town will vote to approve 1.683,97, wait a minute, 1,683,097 pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, F1/2, with an appropriation of $1,369,903 for the purpose of funding direct operations of the solid waste department for FY 22 and in order to fund indirect operating expenses, an additional $361,287. Motion, um,
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Herron. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
And chair votes in favor. Article 12, Water Department, Funding the Water Department Enterprise Fund. To see if the town will vote, $4,813,282 pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, F1/2, with the appropriation of $3,655,268 for the purpose of funding direct operations of the Water Department for FY 22 and in order to fund indirect expenses, an additional $1,158,014 um, has already been appropriated in the general operating fund in. Has already been appropriated in the general operating fund and allocated to the. Water Enterprise Fund, motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren on the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
And Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. All right. Article thirteen. Funding the Sewer Department Enterprise Fund. To see if the town will vote to approve five million, five hundred and forty six thousand, four hundred and forty four dollars pursuant to the same. Chapters before. And with the appropriation of four million, three hundred and sixty seven, eight hundred and ninety two for the purpose of funding direct operations of the Sewer Department. For FY twenty two and to fund, into order to fund indirect operations. One million, one hundred and seventy eight thousand, five hundred and fifty two dollars. Motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren on the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
And chair votes in favor, Article fourteen. Funding the DCTV Enterprise Fund, see if the town will vote to approve five hundred and ninety five thousand, four hundred and eighty eight dollars. Pursuant to Mass General Law. With the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, with the appropriation of four hundred and fifty seven thousand, six hundred and five dollars for the purpose. Of funding direct operations. With an additional. One hundred and thirty seven thousand. Eight hundred and forty three dollars. For indirect. Motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren on the motion. Any questions, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
And chair votes in favor. Funding the Waterways Management Enterprise Fund for the. In the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand. Nine hundred and ninety six. For appropriations for the direct funding of. Operating expenses in the amount of three hundred and two. Thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. With the additional. Five hundred and eighty five, fifty eight thousand, five hundred and eighty five thousand. Has already been appropriated from the general fund allocated to the Water Management Enterprise Fund. With the expenses funded at one hundred and ninety two, six hundred and. One hundred and ninety two thousand, six hundred and twenty six from Waterways receipts. Transfer of two thousand from the general fund to the Water Enterprise Fund. And for which the. To be, and as a subsidy for parking fines issued by the Waterway staff at the Waterways line for which the general fund is the chief beneficiary and a transfer of forty two thousand. From the Waterways Improvement Fund for the purpose of funding forty two thousand for the salary of the harbor master. Motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by. Mr. Harren on the motion, any questions? Okay, Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
And chair votes in favor. Personal bylaw amendments, new position and salary adjustments to see if the town will vote to amend. Provisions of the personal bylaw by adding the following positions in the administrative supervisory group. The engagement coordinator, which will be the compensation schedule agreed. NU dash five, anywhere between eighteen ninety two an hour. To twenty three, twenty five an hour and to amend Schedule E, the seasonal and part time positions. By changing the pay of the following positions. The Assistant Recreation Director from sixteen seventy five an hour to seventeen fifty. The Beach Supervisor in the same amount. Life guide from fourteen seventy five to fifteen fifty. The Park Laborer from thirteen seventy five to fourteen fifty. The Truck Driver slash Laborer from sixteen seventy five to seventeen fifty. The concession assistant manager from thirteen fifty an hour. To fourteen dollars an hour, to fourteen dollars an hour, to eighteen dollars an hour. The production assistant compensation pay from thirteen fifty fourteen. To fourteen twenty five to eighteen twenty five an hour. And by amending. Schedule E. Seasonal and part time position by changing the pay of the following positions. Effective January one, twenty twenty two. The Board Secretary from thirteen fifty. An hour to fourteen twenty five an hour. And the COA bus driver. From thirteen fifty to fourteen twenty five, the gate guy from thirteen fifty to fourteen twenty five. Library page from thirteen fifty to fourteen twenty five. The Office Assistant, the Playground Instructor. The concession server. The Social Day Bus Driver. The Social Day Program Aid. The Civil Preparedness Worker. And the Politellers and Census. All from thirteen fifty to fourteen twenty five. Motion.
Motion to. Questions?
Yes, hold on. Let's get the motion in first.
Yep.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Seconded, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Seconded by Mr. Harren on the motion, Mr. Gracie?
I'd like to ask the question first.
Yes.
What is an engagement coordinator?
While you answer that, I gotta get something to drink.
Sean. We're playing weddings. Sean.
Question was, go ahead, ask it.
Greg was trying to answer, he was muted.
Oh.
Okay, so the engagement coordinator is the position being created by the COA, it's basically an outreach. The outreach worker with added case management duties. This, for the first year of this position will be funded through a grant, a private grant.
Thank you.
And after that.
Questions on the motion?
After that, we're on our own, is that it, Greg?
Well, it's, you know, we're, you know, we've been clear with the council on aging that it'll be reevaluated if the grant funding were to dis- dis- so it's not guaranteed to go on in perpetuity.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? On the motion, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Article seventeen appropriation to the staff fund for collective bargaining and non-union agreement in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren on the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Article eighteen zoning by law amendments to the zoning map and zoning by law relative to the Aquifer Protection District. I'm not going to read all this.
I was just about to ask that.
Ain't gonna happen.
Good call.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren on the motion, any questions, which I hope they're on. Other than good job for protecting our water supply. On the motion, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
And the board votes in favor. Article nineteen. I guess this is the one that keeps coming back that the federal government said we had to do last year and then they said no, and now it's back.
Correct.
All right, Article nineteen, the zoning by law, comprehensive visions, revisions to the floodplain overlay district. Yeah. All that's printed in your warrant. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Harren, is there a second?
I'll second it.
By Mr. Gracie on the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor.
Mr. Chairman, so on Article twenty, I just want to note that. It's a general bylaw revision that goes along with Article nineteen, which is the floodplain management. So the select board is sponsoring this article. The Board of Public Works is in support of it, they were not able to. Get together to vote. Prior to this meeting where you vote on the warrant. So they are going to vote at their next meeting, but. Just so you're aware, it's being sponsored by the select board, but it's, it's just revisions to the general bylaw that are necess- necessitated by. Article nineteen passing.
Okay, that's fine. As long as we have that recommendation for town meeting, that'd be great. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren on the, on the motion, any questions? Okay, Mr. Gracie.
Could we be voting pending the approval by the DPW board?
I don't think that's necessary, this is our recommendation to. Town meeting.
Are we doing it because the DPW has, has recommended to us? I'm talking official basis, that's.
No, it's part of the plant, the planning board has, you know, presented the zoning by law. But they don't sponsor the general by law, the select.
No, no, I understand that, it's just you said we had, they didn't have a chance to vote and.
Well, they would just be supportive of it, so I think the select board still sponsor the general by law article.
All general bylaws are, are come from this board.
Okay.
All right, on the motion, any questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
And the vote, and the chair votes in favor. Article twenty one zoning by law corrections to the science provisions of the zoning by law. As printed in your warrant. Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren on the motion, any questions, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor, Article twenty two. Transfer of the old North Branch Library property from the control of the Library Board of Trustees to the Select Board. Address is thirteen eighty three Tucker Road.
Just a comment about this. Yes, I, I believe that we had some discussion way back. When we first started talking about this property. That we were going to try to get. Enough funds to move that building. And move it to. The DCT, not DCTV, the.
COA.
COA, the COA property. And that. This is a very expensive proposition to, to, to move a, a building of that. Number, number one, because of the age and number two. The companies that, that, that are, that are around that do this particular type of work. Are few and far between. I think there's only one in the entire state of Mass. There is another one in Connecticut here and there, but a lot of money, but. There is a, an awful lot of support to do this, so. I, and I think. With that, I think the transfer to our, to, to the Select Board for that property would be the first step.
If I'm, if I read this correctly. This is the old. Library, which is the longer building, not the old, old library, correct?
It's both.
Yeah, both, so it should be the old North Branch and the old library.
Well, I'm talking.
We call it the property, so it's everything on the property.
My comment is a specific about the, the property in the back, the building in the back.
You're talking about the, the one, the one room building.
Yes, correct.
Okay, my understanding is the council on aging, the Friends of the Elderly were looking to remove that, so. We haven't heard any plans from them yet.
Well, Maria and I have had numerous conversations about it and, you know, if need be, there'll be a fundraising and. I think we can do it, I think we can do it privately.
I, I think in the meantime, let's just get the transfer over to where it's, it's out of the library voting, put these hands into our hands.
Yeah.
And I, it's going to be at least. Unfortunately, it's going to be at least eighteen months. Before we see any movement on the Hathaway Road Route six.
Intersect. Sephead, yeah, right.
Hope eighteen months is really hoping you've done a lot quicker, but.
There's hope.
Yeah, so let's just. So any other questions on this, do I have a motion?
I, I'm motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren, I'm enjoying this. I, I love the cooperation between you two, it's wonderful. Questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yeah.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. All right, Article twenty three, the leasing of the McBrantney Parcels, Slocum Road, town is looking to extend the lease or re. Have the, enter into a lease for the parcel for thirty years.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion, motion made by Mr. Harren, is there a second?
I did second.
Mr. Gracie seconds the motion, any questions? Mr. Talabom.
Comment I was making, I'm very much in favor of putting this in front of town meeting to investigate the possibility of a thirty year lease. And. Subsequent to that would be, anyone comes forward to look through the details of what the proposals are and look at it and try very hard to make something happen, but. This certainly is a vote to investigate the. The possibility of, of, of thirty year lease.
Mr. Harren.
I just make a, a note here that City New Bedford does have fifty year leases and years ago they had ninety nine year leases, now they're down to fifty. Some of their properties.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, any other further questions? On the motion, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor, four to one. Next page, general bylaws, dog licenses fees, we discussed this. With Sarah Haskell. Fee will be going up to. The individual license fee for fixed dogs. We feel sorry for them because they got fixed, in the amount of fifteen dollars.
How much is it for a broken dog?
I don't know, maybe about a buck and a half.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren on the motion, any questions, being none, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren?[1551.26]
Yes.
Mister Mickelson?
Yes.
And Mister Talabom?
Yes.
Article twenty five.
Mister Chairman, so article twenty five, we have a minor edit. Um, third from the bottom, library construction authorization authorization number two is being removed from the list.
All right, so that's out of there, okay. All right, um, article twenty five to rescind, to save the town, we rescind the authority to borrow the borrow previously authorized unissued debt. Soon to be printed in your warrant. Uh, Mister Hare?
Is the reason why that number three is line number three is being removed, could we still have problems with the water? Up in the lamp library?
No, no, it's nothing to do with um the library itself, it was more a a state aid reimbursement needs to be corrected.
Okay.
So, motion, motion to approve less your library construction authorization number two for three million eight hundred seventy-six thousand eight hundred and four dollars.
Which would be article, which would be article six, October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen warrant.
Correct.
Second that motion.
And motion made by Mister Mickelson seconded by Mister Hare on the motion, any questions? All right, Mister Gracie?
Yes.
Mister Hare?
Yes.
Mister Mickelson?
Yes.
Mister Talabom?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, that concludes the warrant.
No, I think.
Motion to have uh Mister McInnes stamp the warrant so they can get out to town meeting members in time?
Can we sign it too instead? So, you know, it's a warrant, it's a, it's a big deal for the town.
We have to get it to the town clerk by Wednesday.
Okay, well.
Do I have a motion for the stamp?
I'll make a motion for the stamp, please.
On the motion, uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any questions on the motion? Okay, roll call, Mister Gracie?
Yes.
Mister Hare?
Yes.
Mister Mickelson?
Yes, I'll be by there and I'll sign it.
Mister Talabom?
Yes.
And chair votes in favor.
Mister Chairman.
So you voted to stamp it? Mister Mickelson's gonna come and sign it, just to be clear, so.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, I don't believe you voted, you personally voted on that article.
Yes, I said yes.
Okay.
On, on the whole, on.
On article twenty five?
No, I said yes.
Okay, fool, could have fooled me. I don't, I didn't think you called yourself.
Well, I'll say yes.
Okay.
And if I didn't, if I didn't tape, then it's a four-o vote. I'm comfortable with that. If I didn't call myself, then that's my faux pas, thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
It's usually my wife that. Points out my fault.
Yeah, I I'm I'm just, I'm just used to watching the details of these.
Thanks filling in as your wife.
Okay. No problem. All right, next item is the town administrator budget statement review.
Uh, yeah, so as part of the uh warrant and budget, uh, this year, we've drafted a budget statement that summarizes the budget. Um, to put in the packet for town meeting reps, so I just included it for the select board to review and if you have any questions and vote to approve. And it'll be included in the packet, it's a summary of what's in the budget.
See, I'm already in trouble. We just had our twenty-ninth wedding anniversary um Saturday, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, any questions on the budget statement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mister Mickelson seconded by Mister Hare on the motion, any questions? Mister Talabom?
I think, I think it's a fine addition to our uh, to the warrant and nice job, Sean.
And and Greg assisted.
And team, I'm sorry. Excuse me, sorry Greg, and team.
Greg, you gotta smile, you you're looking like, you know.
He was, he was.
There you go, thank you. Well, come to these meetings, you smile, Greg.
He was looking like his dog was broken.
I know, huh, looks like he was working on that broken dog licensing fee. Right, on the motion, Mister Gracie?
Yes.
Mister Hare?
Yes.
Mister Mickelson?
Yes.
Mister Talabom?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, next item. Cable Advisory Committee, I had to put on the agenda, gentlemen, because. Our current contract with Comcast will be up this year. And we need to renegotiate the contract as best as we can, but. I wanna add another layer on this committee. Town of Hey Haven has been looking into a municipal internet service. Looking at the details or some of the details they had presented. In a meeting. And the price cost and whatnot. Uh, I would like this cable advisory committee to look into that for the town of Dartmouth. Uh, right now, cable uh. For Haven is looking some of the price point of uh. I can't remember how many megabytes it was, I don't know if it was a terabyte, I I have to look at it. Um, but they're looking at a price point of internet service to uh the complete town of somewhere around fifty dollars a month. Uh, which is far less than uh Comcast can provide. So, um, I'm not looking to um. I'm not looking to get this completely done, but I want, I wanna gather the information. To see if it's possible that can be done, how it can be uh accomplished. It will be a payer user system, uh, similar to Pay Y T, uh, it'll be an enterprise fund more than likely. Um, people who uh use the system, pay in the system, and that'll be what the system pays for. So, um, it's something that we can look into, it's something that will probably won't be delivered. Um, you know, for at least uh a year or if not more, probably two years, probably longer. But I think it's something that we need to take a look at to see if we can provide a a. Better service or. A competing service um for Comcast. Um, I know with Comcast's um. They're the only ballgame in town, unfortunately, unless you go with satellite. Uh, but we can't, we can't negotiate with satellite contracts because that's federal regulated. Uh, so we can only negotiate with Comcast, what we can do with Comcast? It's a good question. Um, but that's something that uh this committee is going to have to look at. And I like to set up this committee to be somewhere between five to seven members if possible with um. Ex-official members uh being. Someone from D C T V. Uh. Mike Corville. Who is our uh cable guy, our our uh tech guy. Um, and either, and Sean can either choose himself or Cody. Um, I know Sean's on a lot of boards, so maybe Cody, this would be something for Cody. Um, since Cody hasn't turned on his video, I'm assuming I'll take that as a yes, that he'll be more than happy to do that.
Sure he will.
So Sean, just to be clear, so um, there's uh. The cable advisory committee that's tasked with reviewing the upcoming contract and. Um, I I I think. And maybe we can split this up into two committees, we can have a a committee to evaluate um. Internet services within town. Just uh, um, because that is a a different, I mean, we can be the same group, you know, Greg obviously should be involved in the. Uh, contract review. Um, and we can incorporate, I can incorporate them both into this charge. Um, I just have to redraft it to cover everything that you wanna cover, so this was really, I mi- I misunderstood, so this was really to. Review the upcoming cable ex- uh expiration and work on uh alternative, well, just. Preparing for the next contract.
Yep.
Um, and then we can certainly create another committee that's tasked with evaluating options. To uh look at other service providers.
Yeah, I'd like to get that done because to be honest with you, I just think if it's just a committee to review a contract with Comcast that has really no. You know, oomph to it, I wanna give him something to 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 come into the meeting and come and look forward to to seeing what they can be done.
Yeah.
So, give him that charge, Frank?
Yeah, I I I comment on a question. Um, I agree with what you stated, uh, and I've had two people waiting to contact me all the time, ever since we first talked about this, they're interested. And the way it was expressed to them in our conversations was not only look at the contract, but also look at alternatives, so I'm glad that's being included. Because they were very excited about that possibility. And the question I want to ask is, when you mentioned Behaven, were you considering the possibility of us partnering with Behaven or doing something like Behaven?
Something like Behaven.
Okay, why, if it was possible to partner with them, why wouldn't we do that, that would keep everybody's thoughts out?
Well, maybe that's a possibility. I mean, it'll end up being um, maybe if that's the case, then New Bedford can join in and it could be uh.
Right.
You know, the greater New Bedford internet service or something like that, whatever you wanna call it, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a a a good regional approach. Um, and it would be, to be honest with you, it would probably reduce the costs.
Right.
You know, even more.
Right.
So maybe that's something that can be discussed.
Yeah, I would.
And something to be looked into.
Yeah, I would like to not limit this committee, I would like to be able to brainstorm and do whatever they think is appropriate for our town.
Yeah.
Uh, including partnering with someone else or creating a new group or wha- whatever, because as you said, Comcast is a monopoly. Uh, it's gonna be hard to overcome that uh in performance. So the more people that are participating, the cost of creating something, the cheaper it is, so.
Well, this is strictly, this is strictly internet service, it's not cable, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't think the town can handle a cable service, so. I think our programming would probably, be honest with you, would suck. You know, they're great.
We wouldn't have enough members.
No, but um.
They might be able to find someone that could do everything for us.
Well, the the thing is, is that unfortunately, it's almost to the point where these cable companies have divided. You know, they divided their territories and they say, okay, we're going here, you stay away, you go here, you know, and we, I know ten years ago. Uh, when this came up, people were talking about Verizon and Verizon said they have absolutely no interest.
Right.
In upgrading their infrastructure in the area.
Right, but but there are other couple things, I mean, you gotta think out of the box, I mean, supposedly Dish Network was interested in something that would would mirror what we get from Comcast.
Uh, the thing is, is that with satellites, that's up to the individual, you know, like I said, it's federally regulated, so it's. If a homeowner wants to go to Dish Network, they can go to Dish Network and drop Comcast.
Right.
There's nothing there, so.
We could have a contract that would give us a better price than doing it individually.
Um, they could take a look at that, I don't think that's possible.
I I think it's possible, but I don't, I don't think it's likely. But I, again, I don't, I don't wanna li- limit this committee to to the way, to what they're thinking about, I would like them to explore it, soon as I think it's possible.
Well, we can kinda keep it open and look at all possibilities.
Right.
Nothing wrong with that.
Somebody, somebody may come up with something that we haven't thought of yet, you know.
Okay, so I think with.
I'll come back with a redrafted version.
Okay, yeah, come back for the, yeah, that'd be great for the next one, that'd be great, all right, so we'll just um table this to the next meeting. Okay, uh, last item on the new business is the Bliss Corner D E P notice. Uh, Sean?
Uh, yeah, so uh, as uh many people have seen, it's been on our website and in the the media. Uh, we received no- notification from D E P. Uh, on April twenty-sixth, it was a notice of responsibility letter, it's their general form letter they send out when there's. Uh, an issue related to contamination or hazardous material. Uh, in the letter, they stated that uh with the information. Provided to them by the town of Dartmouth, um, they've determined that. Uh, the town of Dartmouth and the city of New Bedford share some responsibility for some of the contamination in the area. Um, the letter is very broad and vague on what the extent of that contamination is or what the remediation plans would be. Um, the the purpose of the letter was just a notification that they they see some responsibility. Uh, the city of New Bedford did not submit any information uh to D E P for them to review. It was only based on information from the town of Dartmouth, which in their letter, they were very pleased with what we were able to provide. So, the next steps i- is to schedule a meeting uh internally with D E P to um talk about um. Their next steps that they foresee, they're still not done testing uh property in the area, they've tested all of the residents that have requested. That their property be tested, now they are uh acts contacting some other properties to ask that they can test their sites, so. That'll be going on through the summer. Uh, they also need, still need to determine the extent. Or if there is more extent, um, and then what the remediation plan would be, so, and that would is. Is more work to figure out uh where, how are they gonna remediate and what they're gonna remediate, I think they've made it clear in past meetings that. Uh, there's different ways to handle it depending on the type of contamination. So we will meet with them hopefully in June to move forward, I will keep the board up to date with any new information and we'll make it public. Um, but as of now, I think you can read from that letter, it's, it does not have a lot of specific information, but uh we will move forward and. Uh, do as they're directed, as they're directing um as part, as this is their project.
Uh, I, the the thing I find interesting is that. Um. They're saying that Dartmouth has some responsibility and New Bedford has some responsibility. Yet Dartmouth gave them all the information and New Bedford gave them no information, and yet they come up with the same conclusion for both communities. I mean, that tells that, to me, that tells me a lot. Um, so I I I'm looking this as a standard notice that gets sent out to everybody. And then they see what happens after that. Plus the fact that they haven't finished testing, so. I'm I'm assuming. Whatever happens to the testing, there'll be more information to come forward from D E P other than a standard boilerplate letter. So. Any questions on this uh release, it's already been released? All right, okay. That concludes new business, uh. Old business, any updates on COVID nineteen information other than cases are down?
Cases are down, uh, clinics are now accepting walk-in vaccinations, uh, as of today. Uh, we are in the next phase of the governor's order. Phase four step two, I think, uh, so it's a lot, there's been so many phases and steps, uh, but it. Things are eas- uh easing, I think amusement parks can open now. Um, youth sports activities can open, uh, the high-risk ones are back open, so a number of facilities are starting to open again and. Uh, there should be more at the end of the month and we look forward to easing up and seeing the numbers drop, so it's a good sign.
Oh, good. All right, well, Bliss Corner, I'm, yes, Mister Gracie?
Yeah, I just wanna add a comment that what what a difference of two or three months makes in the status of things uh with the virus. Uh, and I and I wanna continue to encourage anyone that hasn't had the uh vaccine. Uh, they they should really consider getting it because the more people that have it, the sooner normal becomes the reality again.
Yeah, looking at the numbers nationally, um, it's. It's encouraging, um, so. It's just, we'll see how the the trend goes. All right, so we've already had our update on Bliss Corner, so we'll just go over that. Uh, Lake Nokachoke, update on that?
Uh, yes, so earlier this month, uh, the city of Fall River. Was required by MIPA, which is the Massive Houston's Environmental Policy Act Office, uh, they're required to have to do a review. Uh, as you know, they are planning to breach the upper Lake Nokachoke Dam. This is not the lower Lake Nokachoke Dam, but the upper dam, um, they're claiming that it would have no adverse effects on the lower, larger dam. Uh, nonetheless, they are trying to move forward with breaching that that the dam. Uh, Mark Garrett, our environmental affairs coordinator, drafted a an excellent letter stating the multitude of reasons. Uh, why it would have a s- an adverse impact on the, not only Dartmouth, but on the the wildlife and the whole community, the community at large to breach the dam. Uh, as part of that meeting though, the day of the meeting, the city of Fall River withdrew the application. Um, but they continue with the meeting as a listening session, so there were a number of residents, a number of members of. D E P and other agencies uh that were online to voice their concerns with the project, including Mark. Um, so, um, that's kind of where it's left off, so they withdrawn for now, uh, we assume they'll. May come back in the future, but they have a a lot of hurdles to to get past in order to get that project approved and, you know, I think the. You, the board, uh, are interested in maintaining the dam, I mean, the lake in its complete capacity. And we've made that clear to the city Fall River, we'll continue to have discussions with them in in that regard, but uh Mark's here to answer any other questions if you have more detail.
Well, that letter that was penned by Mark, um, was just absolutely, it was, you looked at it and it's okay. All right, well, yeah, oh, I mean, it was a great letter, to be honest with you, one of the better letters I've seen coming from. Uh, environmental affairs, um, and it's just uh. How impactful it's going to be, um. I could tell you this, uh, the immediate impact of that letter was, there wasn't anybody who. Uh, lived on the lake or was in any of the social media groups with the lake, um, that. Had anything bad to say about that letter, in fact, they all pretty much uh said it was a very good letter to to send. Um, so I know that, I know the city has uh withdrawn its application, so. Um, they are, I guess their neck, their next step by now is to go and get a wildlife assessment, if I'm not mistaken. Um, for whatever agency, alphabet soup there's that's handling that, I'm assuming that's the next step for them. Um, and then I guess that'll determine whether or not they're gonna do a full E I N or not, is that true, Mister Garrett?
Well, I think it's, first of all, thank you for your comments on my letter, um. I think that. What they broached in the meeting was that they needed to get a sign off from Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. Relative to wildlife habitats of rare and state listed species, that's one step. I, what what I would like to share with the board is that. The town of Dartmouth is the largest land of butter to what they're calling the Upper Lake. Uh, the town purchased a hundred seventy plus or minus acres of the Interfaith Church uh council land. And I'm estimating, I don't, I don't know of any actual inventory of resources that were ever taken on that piece of property. I've never seen any and no one's ever indicated that they exist and frankly, I haven't had the time to look. However, if you go on map geo. I'm estimating uh that there's probably the potential of a hundred twenty-five. Uh. Acres of jurisdictional wetland, not to mention habitat issues and the like. And, uh, you know, one of the key points, uh, for those who weren't at that that public meeting. With MIPA was, nope. They had not done an inventory on that piece of property, first, they haven't asked permission from the town to do the inventory, secondly, there is no inventory up there. And my basic question was, you're proposing to drop the lake's surface water elevation by three and a half feet. What does that mean to resources upgrading beyond your project area, which only represented about nine acres of a. Upgrading area, uh. My simple math tells me there's a hundred sixty-one acres, but we're not accounted for that are owned by the town of Dartmouth, so. I mean, from an investment standpoint, I think the town should be really keen on that, and I I think that there are a lot of environmental hoops. They have to go through and um, Andrew Point, who was the circuit writer for D E P Southeast and Lakeville. Uh, when he got, when he came to his comments, he basically said, well, I agree with what Mark said in his letter. Uh, you know, so there, there are a lot, my point is that there are a lot of environmental hurdles that were not handled in the document that was submitted. Uh, that they still have to address, and I think that the town, my my recommendation to this board. Is that the town not ignore that we are. And a butter, the largest of butter, and there is in, there are resources that we have invested public funds into. That could be impacted and changed, and we should be concerned about that, and somebody should tell us really what's gonna happen and not. Conjecture on what they anticipate might happen as a regulator. I can't, I can't issue permits on anticipate, anticipated what may happen. I have to, I have to have a little bit more factual information than that, and so does D E P for that matter.
Well, I found it pretty interesting that uh your letter was sent to them on Thursday. And by Monday, they decided to pull it. So, I, to me, that is a recognition of, oops. We didn't do what we needed to do, um, and I know my. And I know my fellow colleagues on the board are adamant about maintaining the quality in that area. But I know this, there has been many posts on social media and also sightings by people and also listening that there is an eagle population in the area. And it has become, it has been seen golden eagles and also bald eagles in the area. So I know that population is coming back. And it's in our area and it's an area that there's, there's a reason why the eagles are in the lake. It's not because they enjoy a bath every so often. It's because their food supplies there. So whether it be fish or other fowl, that's, that's there. And it's just something that needs to be preserved as much as possible. So any, any, Frank?
Yeah, I also wanted to comment on the letter and how, how detailed it was and thought provoking. A very, very complete. And I wanted to compliment, compliment Mark on, on the letter and his involvement. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you. I should confess, I've written expanded environmental notification forms and have gotten waivers for EIRs. So I sort of know what has to go in them and clearly in reviewing that one, there were a lot of pages, but there was not a lot of significant information in those pages.
Thank goodness the recommendations. And your experience and your experiences is, is amazing, but and you, and we could see how, how impactful it was within that letter that you wrote.
Yeah, I thank you.
Thank you very much, by the way.
It's good to have that experience on our side.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything else, gentlemen? Okay, terrific. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, next we have minutes of April 26th.
Looked fine to me and I would motion to approve.
Second. Second.
All right, motion made by Gracie, seconded by Mr. Haron. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, let's see informational, do I have any information? Let's see. All right, the as it stands right now, the town's annual memorial day parade will kick off at 9:00 AM from the town landing and concluding at the World War One Monument located at the intersection of Russell's Mills Road and Elm Street. Hopefully we all have a good day for that. And I will make every attempt to, to be part of that. If my knee allows me to do whatever I have to do. So anybody else have anything? Okay, Mr. Tattelbaum first, then Mr. Mickelson?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. A bit of a sad note. One of our outstanding board, board members from the years past, Laura Stone and her and her husband lost a son. Max Stone was aged 21. He battled non Hodgkins, BSL and former and lost his battle. Max was 21 years old. He's a fine, fine fellow, great son and brother and a friend. And may rest in peace and bring some peace into the family. And I salute Laura's been a, what a member of our town, outstanding. The people she's done and worked for and helped and we owe a great bit of gratitude to her, to all the work she's done and continues to do. And it's a sad time. And can't imagine what it's like to have to go through that as a parent. And salute Laura, her husband Jeff, and thank you. And rest in peace, Max.
Yeah, that's probably one of the hardest things a parent ever, ever do. And I know I was, I was floored when I, when I heard the news. Just absolutely floored. I know Laura has posted on social media that there'll be a celebration of Max's life on the 29th of this month. It'll be at the the Congo, the Congregational on Middle, Middle Street. So I'm assuming it'll be crowded. So it'll be but you can always contact Laura and family through social media for your family's condolences. Mr. Mickelson?
God bless the, the family. And let's take a little minute tomorrow morning before we do anything, get out of bed or before you go to sleep tonight, just say a prayer for that, that charming family that's lost. It's such a horrible thing for a parent to lose his child. I don't know how this segues into what I wanted to talk about, but
It doesn't.
No, nothing does. And I think you all know that I, I've gone through the same issue. And it's, it's with you forever and ever until the day you die. I'd like to, I'd like the board to to think about getting back to in-house meetings, live meetings. I think we should just discuss it for a while, maybe the end of August, maybe September. Just to see how things go during the summer. But I'd, excuse me, I'd love to, I'd love to see us back in that building.
Yeah, I think that the time is coming that will, that will happen. I still want to follow the state guidelines.
Oh, yeah. I agree that.
And I mean, if we need be, we can social distance at our meetings. We have the setup. We have the room available to do so. And you know, I, it's coming. You know, I'm greatly anticipating that it is coming. So anything else, gentlemen? Mr. Haron?
I just wonder if there's any information on the host agreement for the marijuana manufacturing facility?
No, we had an applicant. They are still in the process of pulling their information together, specifically the special permit that's required. So and that's, you know, until they've been issued that, the process can't move forward.
Okay. Great, thank you. Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it's appropriate for the board to have some flowers sent to the Stones on our behalf to show that we're thinking of the family.
I believe there was a, I'm not sure and I have to double check. I think there was an in lieu of. So if that's the case, I would make it individual versus town, the town can't do any kind of in lieu of thing.
We can't, we can't make a donation or something to whatever.
You can personally.
Personally, yes.
Yeah, I was just trying to show a soul force and support for the family from the group. That's a
I understand that, but I don't want to I don't want to put a kibosh on that, but we have a lot of people in town, have a lot of relatives in town. You know what I mean? I don't want anybody to say, well, you did it for them. Why didn't you do it for us or any of that type of thing? So I'd rather keep that on a personal level as much as possible.
Yeah, my thought was she was a swot.
Yes, I know. I understand that. I understand that. Mr. Talabon?
I might suggest there is a donation listed to an Incon Nation camp in Connecticut. And maybe we can each make our own donation as a select board member individually.
That would work.
I, I think, I think anything that we do individually and represents our board and our relationship with the Stones and and Lara and the family. And I think what, whatever we can find to do personally as little or as more as you can give, just to, just to text to, to Lara at some point. She's but I can't say anything.
I'm sure she'd appreciate it.
Let's just do whatever we can.
Anything else, gentlemen? Sean, do you have anything else?
That is all.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gracie, seconded by
Second.
Mr. Haron on the motion. Any questions being none. Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Good night, everybody. Thank you.